I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled.
Sorry, I better talk into the mic. Welcome to everyone to the regularly scheduled City Council, Kingman City Council meeting held on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 at 5:00 PM. We'd like to have a call to order, enroll call.
Mayor Miles. Vice Mayor Watkins.
Her internet is down, I just got a text.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mellow.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused tonight. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Matt Maestas of the Hope City Church. I would invite everybody to stand and then afterwards join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Lord, we come before you today, God, and we ask that you would be with all the council members, Lord, and all of their decision making today. God, we pray a special blessing in favor over this meeting. And Lord, would you give us the strength to make the decisions that we need to make and the courage to go forward with them? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one is call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And of course, this is a hybrid meeting. There are those who are attending via Zoom. In fact, I need to recognize that Mayor Miles is having technical problems, but she is trying to log on and participate in this meeting, and she has asked me, Vice Mayor Ken Watkins, to conduct this meeting. Also, there are three different ways of doing it, calling participation and written comments are accepted. We do have one written comment that was sent, that was emailed to us. Did everybody on council see that? Okay.
Vice Mayor, that was for a specific item on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are right. I apologize, Manager Foggan, thank you. So anyway, in person, call in, Assistant Clerk Tanya.
Vice Mayor, we haven't had anybody registered to join us via Zoom and no written comments, and we have no participants in the audience at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
And let the mayor, the record reflect that the mayor has logged on.
Welcome Mayor Miles.
Good evening, everyone.
Then item number two on our agenda, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items, council members, that need to be removed and discussed?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Miles.
I would like to remove item C on the consent agenda.
Item?
C.
C, okay. Any other items?
Vice Mayor, I would like to remove item D.
Item D, okay. Counsel? Okay. Do I hear a motion then to accept items A, B, B, F on the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have, we moved second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mayor Miles, item C.
Item C regards the support for the Kingman Crossing Regional Trail and Mojave County Park with campsites. The reason I pulled this is because I actually, when I pulled up the resolution, at least the copy that I have, it is incomplete. And if you look at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th, whereas, it just says findings of Arizonas, and then something was left out. So I don't, I don't know if there is another copy that was completed, but that mine was not. And so I think that needs to be completed before we approve it. And the other thing that I wanted to ask about this is because this supports the trail, which I think, of course, I have great support for the regional trail and the proposed Mojave County Park with campsites, but since we cannot, we could support that, but my question is, is Mojave County ready to consider a, a parallel or a complementary resolution regarding a Mojave County campsite, park with campsites? And is this different than the existing one? And if so, would they, are they on board with this? And will they do, they join us in this effort?
I can answer that, that question if.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Miersman.
The reason this has been proposed to you first is so that Mr. Pennington could take that to the county commissioners and showing that you support it. So it hasn't gone to them yet for their support, but, and it isn't the same campground that's on the top of the mountain. It'll be another campground that's, will be pretty close to the crossing gar, I mean the cattle guard when you're going up Walupi Mountain Road. It'll be inland from that area. Basically, that's where the proposed campsite and park is. And this will have to go through them, it'll have to go through BLM. There's a lot of other groups that will have to be supportive, supportive of it as well. So, and I hope that answers your question, I'm not sure that it does.
Well, is there any, is, does that park and campsite, is that included on a concept map?
Yes, and it was the map included in the presentation. It's on there.
Okay, and will this be a campsite with fees that supports the trail maintenance?
That, that's what Mr. Pennington's recommending. He's going to recommend that to the county commissioners.
Okay.
So we don't know whether it will, whether, whether they will do it or not, but we were obviously hopeful that they will and.
I know that Mr. Pennington is here with us in council chambers. Mr. Pennington, would you like to come up and comment on this? If you could answer these questions.
Yeah, and if, just let us know the status of your discussions with any of the supervisors, especially those associated with our region, like Supervisor Bishop or.
Would you state your name?
Yeah, my name is Travis Pennington, I'm a resident of Kingman, Arizona. This process has taken maybe three plus years to get, get to here. My last interactions with the county, I've communicated both with Jean Bishop, our county supervisor, and Travis, our county supervisor. I've asked for their support and they are willing to give it, and then I was kind of coached. I've had meetings with Sam Elters at the county, the county manager. So at his request is why this is here tonight, right? So he asked for me if I could get, that it would go a long ways to be able to go to the city council, get a resolution of support to support this trail system, and then be able to take that to the county, and then they could pass a resolution that kind of mirrors what we're passing. And he said that would give him the authority to allow cities or county staff to start working on this, right? There's some extensive negotiations. We're basically asking the county, or asking BLM to give the county a 60 to 100 acre piece of property up on Walupi Mountain, just off of Walupi Mountain Road for a future park, trailhead, where this, all these trails, you could get on this 12, 13 miles of trails anywhere in Kingman and end up at this county park. And at that county park, there would be overnight camping, very similar to what you have in the Walupis or at Davis Camp. Those generate a lot of income for, for the Parks Department. So we are hoping to reproduce that success with this. That would be maybe a funding mechanism, and I've, every meeting I've had with the county, I've asked them to participate in the trail maintenance with the city, right? They have this park that we're going to work really hard to try to help them get, but then the city's stuck with the maintenance on this trail. So we've asked, we haven't been told yes, but we've asked from day one that a portion of those proceeds are used to help fund the maintenance within the city limits. So I hope if they have any other questions, I'd be happy, but I'll keep it short and simple.
Mayor Miles, or Mike, do you have any questions about that?
I don't, that's exactly the way I understood it.
Well, I, my other question is, okay, well, so the county, you are talking with them. What is the, I, I still think that we either take out the whereas that is incomplete or complete it. I don't want to approve something that is, has a dangling whereas. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, our city attorney, Mr. Cooper, has a comment about that.
Yeah, I think we can just strike that on the record, just prove the resolution striking that, that statement. I'm guessing it's just, it might have been a copy and paste error, something happened there, but this, again, it's just, it's a resolution supporting this action, and I'm not sure what to find, what Arizonas is trying to support, but I think that with striking that language, we'll be okay to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'd like that struck, and also I'd like the fonts parallel there is the one, and, and the one that's bolded, whereas this trail will be constructed with easements, crossing land of the, and then it has a list of entities that would have to be involved, that should be parallel fonts and also correct grammar. Then I would make a motion to approve it with those changes.
Okay, so you are making a motion with those changes?
I'm sorry.
Are those changes, are those changes clear to everybody?
With the strikeout of the fifth whereas and with the fourth whereas corrected with respect to font and grammar.
Okay.
Is everybody clear on that?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a second.
Okay. So noted then, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any disagree? Okay, thank you, motion carries. Item D, Councilmember Mellow.
I just wanted to give Judge Singer opportunity to tell the county about this program, again, the short version.
The short version, that's always the, the thing with me, isn't it? Making church short. Yes, I know.
Welcome Judge.
Thank you. And again, I got to admit, I have a little PTSD from the last time I had something yanked off the consent agenda, was a fax machine about six years ago, so I'm still a little rattled by it, but I'll try to persevere here. Anyways, they, yes, this grant, we are very grateful to have this grant that's, that was approved by BJA that we're running in conjunction with the Lake Havasu Veterans Treatment Court. Again, as you can see, it's in excess of $600,000 for several years to help us pay for a lot of the different costs with the, with the vet court program, from counseling to the treatment, urinalysis, and different aspects of the vet court program. So we had a grant with SAMSA that we operated with Lake Havasu that just recently expired, and that was very successful, and so now we are, we're grateful to be able to partner up with them again, and we were awarded this grant at the end of December. So again, it's a great opportunity, saves Kingman and the court a lot of money, because now these costs will be taken care of through the grant, and it's just really a win-win situation. And again, what we've always thought about with these grants, when we initially started getting into this, was, you know, Kingman and Lake Havasu could go out there and compete for these grants against each other, or we can team up, and I think we look even more attractive to have these grants awarded to us as we sort of operate in a quasi-regional veterans treatment court. We, we each have our own vet court, but we do work together in a lot of, a lot of areas. And so I think that's, that's made us attractive to get now this second very large grant, because we're able to service, you know, more and more veterans. And because of this, now we'll be able to expand and again, take veterans from other courts, you know, like the Justice Court and, and other courts. So, I mean, that's the bottom line, is helping out our local veterans. Again, it makes no sense that if one of our local veterans here just happens to pick up, you know, charges out in the, out in the county, that they can't come into our program. You know, this allows us to expand and bring more of them in, and, and we're proud of the program. Again, we've had 70 graduates to date. We're getting ready to have another graduation in February, graduate two more, and getting very proud of it, and we look to grow and expand because of this grant.
Thank you Judge. Councilwoman Mellow, do you have any comment?
Just thank you for the good work that you do, and I'm so grateful for this program. Anything we can do to help our veterans, I thank you Judge Singer.
Thank you, appreciate it, appreciate your all's support, so we're, we're very proud of it.
Any other comments from council or questions for, for Judge Singer? I too congratulate you for all the good that you're doing for our veterans, and I know some of us have, have been able to attend graduation day at Veterans Court. I've attended a couple, and they're happy days.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, our next graduation is February the 16th at 1:30. And the afternoon's a Wednesday, so anybody who would like to come and celebrate our, our graduation, we're going to have, again, two graduates that day, and we're very proud of them, they put in a lot of hard work, and it's always an exciting day and kind of reminds us of why we do this.
Once again, thanks for that invitation too. And I would invite everybody to attend that if they have a possible, they can. It's a great day. Thank you Judge Singer, appreciate that. Councilwoman Mellow, then do you have a motion on this?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the item D.
There's a second motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, any disagree?
Aye.
That was delayed, yes. Thank you Mayor, sorry about that. I need to wait a little bit before I ask for that. Okay, it's all approved, motion carries. Moving on to item three, we have no old business. Item four, new business. And item A, under that new business, electric scooter pilot program operating agreement. And we'd like to welcome Bennett Bradley.
Thank you. Vice Mayor and Mayor and council members. How do you open this?
Oh, he's doing it?
Okay. So as we discussed in the work session on December 7th of last year, we would be bringing back to council to have you guys look at the possibility of an electric rideshare scooter pilot program. So we, we went to work on an agreement. The agreement would establish rules and regulations for the temporary use and the operation of these stand-up scooters. It would ensure that such sharing systems are managed in a manner that are consistent with the safety and well-being of pedestrians, as well as bicyclists, motorcyclists, and other users within the city public right of way. So I'd like to highlight that this is a, it's a one-year pilot program. The city is not financially invested in the program. We're not committed to multiple, multiple years, and it is a, a trial area, so it's not the entire city to start out with. At the expiration of the program, the city will have data that we can look at to determine whether or not it's a good fit, and we can decide whether to continue or discontinue the program. There is a application fee, about $250, and a rideshare fee of 10 cents per ride that the city is paid, and we can use that monies for programs like bike lanes in the future. The agreement also allows for mobility data gathering by the scooters that navigate throughout the city. Information like this will determine, we can look at the, the routes that most of these are using, the businesses, the workplaces that are being used to visit. The data can also help determine where to locate future bike paths and bike parking throughout the city. The agreement also states that e-scooters will be governed by rules of the road, and they are to be ridden on the streets. The company is required to provide visible contact information, including toll-free numbers, email addresses on each of the scooters for members of the pub, public to make relocation requests should they arise, or report any issues with the units. The company should also defend and identify and hold harmless the city should any issues come up in regards to lawsuits and items of that nature. It also requires that they carry appropriate minimum insurance coverage for operation of the stand-up scooters within the, within the city. Let's see. Where's the switch page here? Just scroll down, got it? All right. There we go. So to use the electric scooters, riders must download an app via the smartphone, create an account, and pay to ride. According to the agreement, the rules, which are similar to those using a bicycle, they must be followed by the rider. Anyone over 18 with a smartphone and a credit card can activate and use the scooter. There are also education tutorials that they have to go through when they activate it, and they have to sign that they agree to those. I did want to include for your review, the initial pilot area. It consists of the area south of the I-40, which includes downtown, East Andy Devine, Stockton Hill Road, east Walupi Mountain up to eastern. And the way that we are able to keep these units within this area is through geozone technology. So we select those areas, and if the units approach those other areas, they shut down, so they don't operate outside of, outside of those areas. So the agreement also addresses parking and operations of the scooters, and how the company will handle any issues that may arise within the city. Bird Ride Inc. operates under a model that leans on the local business to run the infield operations. So every night, the business will locate the scooters wherever they might be, wherever they've been driven in that area, and they will, they will relocate them to their appropriate locations that are picked up the next day, or when the next user is going to use them. So they do that every night. Businesses, this business will address any maintenance or complaints that also might arise. We'll work closely with this individual to determine speed limits, so the speed limits can, can be, if we are dealing with hills, we can gear down the limits, so when they approach those areas, the speed limits will be decreased. As well as if it's in a certain area where we don't want them to go over a certain speed, we can also put in the scooters to decrease those limits as well. We also will have a ride and no ride areas determined within other areas where we, and this could be looked at as the program is implemented. If problems arise, we can talk with Bird, and they're very open to those discussions about changing different things that might come up during this process. I will say that the individual, the individual business has already been selected by, by Bird, should we choose to, to move forward with this, and they do live here in Kingman. So in closing, if council did decide to move forward with the e-scooter pilot program, the city would be joining roughly 400-plus other communities that have gone down the similar path. You know, our concerns as staff, our reservations were similar to many of these other communities when we looked at going through this process. So in, in looking at that, we felt that a pilot program would be the best instrument to implement this e-scooter program within the city. And at this time, I'm sure you're going to have questions. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as I've asked the Bird City representative to be available in case you have any questions for them. Thank you very much.
Okay, council members, discussion.
Vice Mayor, I'm looking at our backup documentation, and that's not the presentation that we have, so I'm not sure, do we have a different presentation?
So.
So, and the reason for my question is because if you could pull that map back up, in our backup PowerPoint, we have.
We have the map and a picture.
Central, do I, am I looking at the wrong thing? It might be.
There's only, I only have two things on mine.
Okay. All right, so that's what I wanted to see was the map, so. So could you?
The map is attached at the end of the.
Okay, okay. So it's Stockton Hill Road? Can, can you go over the, the map area again?
Yeah, so basically that outline there is, you know, all the way up south of I-40. We've got Stockton Hill Road, Walupi Mountain up to eastern, so those would be the limitations that they would be allowed to go at this point.
Okay. All right. And then the letter that we received as a comment, I don't know if you're, you're going to address that, but I, I have some questions within that letter that I'd like to ask maybe the Bird representative. But for you, before you leave. Are there provisions in the one-year agreement to, like, if there's a complaint, like, how long is it going to take them to rectify? Like, if we, I know we're in, in this for a year. If we start receiving complaints, what's Bird's responsibility to respond?
Sure, absolutely. So we do, as a city, have the ability to, if they don't respond, to go in and collect any issued scooters, and then we have a $25 cost to Bird if that happens. It's within a 24-hour period. But typically, when, you know, we're dealing with our type of a community and talking to the representative, a complaint comes in, they immediately get that complaint, and then it's, it's a small enough community where they can get out there within a decent timeframe and remedy that. So, but legally, they have 24 hours to take care of it.
Okay, all right. And they, they do live here? The Bird representative lives in Kingman?
Yeah, and, and that was one of the reasons we kept the, the area smaller. And we also have, which I didn't mention that, there's 50 units that would be part of this pilot program. And so those 50 units would be strategically placed based upon our, our meeting with them and deciding where, where we felt the need would be.
Okay, and, and that was another question I had, if I may.
Yes, Councilwoman Samley.
So the locations, how are the locations determined? And are they in front of businesses? Do you get the businesses to agree to host them there? Are they, do you have the locations predetermined?
We do have in mind some locations. And then we're gonna have discussions about other locations that the representative feels, based upon their experience, they, they've had good results with in the past. And then I have Mike on the, on the line as well. He, he might be able to, you know, answer that. Mike, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a good question. I think what's important to note is that it's, it's this ongoing and evolving process. So if we designate certain areas that we're gonna deploy those vehicles one day, that doesn't mean that it has to stay that way for two weeks, three weeks, three months from now. The beauty of it is that they can change. So if there's construction that's happening, there are events that are happening, there's a parade happening, whatever that is, those locations can change. And we'll also just let the market determine some of those deployments too. So if we see stronger usage of certain areas, we can put more there and vice versa.
So I, I'm just curious if you approached a business or a place to locate these, and the business was okay with it, and then all of a sudden, the business is not okay with it, or, you know, it was affecting them in some way. Is, can it, can it be restructured, can it be moved at that request?
Yeah, well, I, I think what's important to know is we use the city's right-of-way to place those vehicles. So it's never on a business's property.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Councilwoman Mello.
So if they go outside the designated area and it shuts down, it's just left there, can you, can they turn it around and get back in the area, and it turns back on?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, you could just pop a 180, and you could get back there. It's, it's when you're approaching an area, it'll actually slowly come to a halt. You're notified over your phone, the vehicle will actually make an audible sound as well, so it'll remind you in as many ways as possible. So the point is not to have it leave the area, and then it just sits there. The point is to alert someone that they've gone into area that's not city-designated, and so they have to turn around.
And, and Mike, is it, am I correct in that when they upload, or when they go onto the system, it has a map of the area?
Yeah, it, it'll show you every location that's available and that's not available. It'll show you also the locations of every vehicle. So it shows you in a very clear map kind of where that is. And usually, it might take a couple of weeks for people to kind of, you know, remember that or memorize it. So maybe the first couple of weeks, you might see some people saying, you know, oh, I, I thought I could go this way, but I couldn't. But pretty quickly, those types of moments tend to, tend to subside.
And I, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I have had several residents that reached out, and they were not for this. I just want to let you know.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mello. Any other comment? Councilwoman.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, Mayor Miles.
I, you know, I'm a pretty, that's a most person, I guess. I'm still really trying to get ahold of how this works, because I see the map. It's a big territory, actually, that it's covering. And I also see, you know, parts of it are downtown, and parts of it are, are Stockton Hill Road, which is highly commercial. You've got 50 vehicles, I guess, and you say you'll have them in city right-of-way. Where do they, I mean, what's the strategy behind this? Do people just pick them up in various places? Do you scatter them out? I guess on a pilot program, I would have thought we would see, you know, well, they'll, we'll have some here, and I would, I would see little pockets where we would plan to have some of these scooters, because there, it's so disparate, whether you're going to be on Eastern or whether you're going to be, you know, on Beale Street. And so how do you decide that? And that, I guess on your phone, as you said, but. And then do people return them to that spot? Or do they just drop them off and stop it? And the other, I have to ask, that's question one, that kind of aligns with it though, about these furniture, what do you call furniture, where you park them? I'd like more detail on that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the, the designated zones are things that we will figure out with the city, you know, weeks before a launch, right? So that's not, that, that's not the determination of this. The determination of this is to figure out, hey, does the city want to move forward with a pilot program? And then in advance of a launch, we go through a whole coordination efforts and determining, hey, what are some of these areas that you want vehicles to slow down? What are areas that you don't want vehicles at all? What are your recommended deployment zones where you, where you think that these vehicles should be made available? And we take the city's input, we take our operational excellence, we take the input from this local representative, and, and all those comes together to find some of those deployment zones. And so vehicles will be in increments of about three to five units, and we'll probably have a couple dozen of those designated locations. So there's no physical infrastructure, but those are places we, we call them nests, because we're, you know, Bird, and that's, that's a, that's a pun. So that's, that's what we do. But the beauty of it, of course, is that someone could ride this exactly to where they want to go. You know, consider, you know, think about it about taking an Uber or something to the front door of the place you're going to. You're not limited to only taking it to, you know, a set location to another set location. So that's, that, that's the benefit, that's why people tend to use this a lot.
What is the structure around these that identify that they are located there, or are they just sitting out?
Yeah, it's just virtual. So you, you'll see it on your, on your phone, but it's not a physical thing.
Okay, could you address the parking as people use them? And you say they can park, I don't know, the term furniture somewhere.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't understand that terminology.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's funny, it's actually a city-designated term, and I, and I get that a lot. Actually, a lot of cities don't really know what that is, because maybe it's not like foretale. The furniture zone is just the location, you know, in, in between the, you know, the, the throughway and the curb. So it's the place where people tend to put their furniture when it needs to be, you know, hauled away by something, or it's where light fixtures are placed, or where benches are. So it's a section on typically a wider sidewalk. And that, that's just kind of standard language that's used with a lot of cities that was just copied over.
Mayor? Any more questions?
I have another question.
I think we might have lost Mayor Miles.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was muted. I muted so you wouldn't hear my dogs.
Okay.
The, I appreciate the, the, the explanation. So if we were driving up, well, up Stockton Hill Road, and on the sidewalk, by the bus benches, or the bus stops, there could be these scooters parked by that, because that's the furniture zone?
Yep, yeah, yeah, I think I could probably find it. I could give everyone a visual. And I could send some, some photos as well, if you feel like that would be, be helpful, Mayor, just to kind of visualize it. But there are a lot of locations, even on, you know, Beale Street, for example, where you could have, you know, it's a bit of a wider sidewalk, and vehicles are placed, you know, kind of close to where the curb is right there. So they're just, you know, they're strategically placed in those, those zones. But you're right, that's another good example of being on Stockton, you could find a vehicle, you know, on the sidewalk, and the point is you can walk up to it, unlock it, rent it, and then just take it off, and you're, you're good to go.
Um, okay, I have another question, if I can find it. Okay, my furniture zone. I, I will, this has a termination clause in it. I see that, but. I'm just concerned, because like, Councilwoman Mello said, I've heard from some residents too, especially downtown, who are quite uneasy with this, because they see them that they're going to be just on the sidewalk, left without, if there are no designated spaces for their parking, that they'll be pretty haphazard, and, and so those are concerns. And I also saw that in some cities, they have designated parking spaces for, for the scooters. And even the point where they can only turn off if they are in those designated parking spaces. And that was based on some issues that they had had with complaints. So are you clear with that?
Yeah, I think, you know, th, these types of questions and these types of concerns are really things that you see as a result of being in a, maybe a large place like, you know, a Phoenix, or a Los Angeles, or a San Diego. It's not a scenario that's realistic in a place like, like Kingman. And, and I say that with such confidence, because those places have, no exaggeration, thousands and thousands of vehicles on the road. They have four companies all doing the same thing. That's not what we're doing here. We're doing a very calculated, very measured, very small approach, which is why we recommend that this is a trial, right? That, that's the goal of this, is to say, hey, is this going to work in our community? If it's clear and obvious that it's not, well, then we'll, we'll shake hands and say, hey, you know what? You were right about some of these concerns. But frankly, we, we launched about 180 new cities in the last year in the U.S., many of them very similar to Kingman, and every single one of them came back to us and wanted to extend that program. So that's why we're able to say, hey, this is what we've done in other cities. We feel like it's gonna work here, and now we let the city determine that.
Okay, um, I think that I have a question that staff may have to address. We have, we, we know that another counselor has brought up the issues of coasting vehicles associated with this particular decision downtown. And we also know from the PowerPoint that won't be seen tonight, but it was attached to our agenda, that Lake Havasu has prevent, they do not allow coasting vehicles in their business section, I think. So for staff, I would, I would ask two things. One, we know that we are going to have the Downtown Streetscape project starting soon, and soon being hopefully this year. And that is going to require modifications to the sidewalks and the streets in our, in our most populous, you know, tourist area, what Beale Street. So how does this fit with the construction and the, and the outcomes, the results of that? I mean, if these have to be on the street, and we have parking on the street, and the sidewalks are expanded, which I think they are going to be, does that really contribute to a pedestrian-friendly downtown? That's, that's the first question.
The answer to that question, Mayor, is it does contribute to a friendly pedestrian downtown, because you're using low-speed vehicles and reducing traffic in, on Beale Street, as an example. We are, part of what we're doing with the Downtown Streetscape is narrowing the lanes, slowing down traffic. We are absolutely encouraging and wanting bike traffic as part of what's happening in our downtown. So I would say that we look, we would consider this in the same vein as a bicycle. And the, frankly, this is an on-street vehicle that we're talking about, required to be on the street when operated, just like a bike. And it will, with narrower lanes on Beale Street, will require drivers to be aware of their surroundings and of the activity, both pedestrian and what we would consider to be slower mobility vehicles like bikes and scooters. As far as the construction, they would have to abide by the same laws and requirements that any vehicle would in a construction zone. I don't know that they necessarily interfere with the construction, but that is something that, that they would, would impede use in certain areas during certain construction times.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. That just caused question one thing. If, if a citizen in any part of the area that we're talking about had concerns about one of the scooters, whether, whether it was being operated or just parked, especially if there just be information on the scooter itself that would allow them to contact the, the company to, to give their complaint to that company?
Yeah, yes, yeah, there's about, I think, six different ways you can get in touch with us. All over our website, over social media, on the vehicles themselves. Most cities even dedicate a, a section on their website for a landing page on, here's the number you call, here's the email you send, here's how you get in touch with us. So we've.
I'm a business owner, and I walk out and it's blocking my door. I don't want to go look it up on a computer. I want to look at the vehicle.
It's on the vehicle.
Yeah, just call that number, I want a quick fix there, so.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's just, what I, what I'm driving at is that it's, it's everywhere. It's, there's 20 different ways I think you can do it. And, and, and again, we, we've done this with hundreds and hundreds of cities by now that we know what's important to most cities, and we know it's important to council members and staff, and I think just the general being proactive is the best thing that we can do.
Okay, I appreciate your time in answering these questions. I think that we, we have heard from citizens, and I want to make sure they know that these things are discussed, especially from Mr. Mike Case, who did submit a quite a lengthy comment, very recent comment about his concerns about it. And so I appreciate the, the time spent answering it. So thank you very much.
Is that all, Mayor?
The next one is from Manager Foggan. Vice Mayor, I have one more.
Okay.
Uh, and I would go to Manager Foggan and just ask, will we be able in the future, I know you're gonna have that coasting presentation tonight, but that will come back, because we will have the conversation about the coasting vehicles, since some of us see that as associated with the same type of transportation issues.
I didn't hear a question.
Will it be coming back?
Oh, absolutely, yes, I'm sorry.
Back as a, as a presentation?
Yeah, we'll.
But.
We held it off.
Objective of considering it for other types of vehicles, or coasting vehicles.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have the coasting conversation, the coasting vehicle conversation for the, for our downtown at probably the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Miles. Councilwoman Samley? Oh, you don't have a question now?
Well. My question was more about the area and the, I mean, I just, I'm envisioning these vehicles going down Stockton Hill Road on a Friday afternoon where it's back-to-back traffic, and it's just, it's just congested anyway. And there's a lot going on between that I-40 corridor and in between Walmart, and we already have distracted drivers. So I, I just am a little bit concerned about some of the areas that were chosen. So I, I didn't know, you know, obviously, you as a company did some research and looked at the highly trafficked areas, but I think that some of the highly trafficked areas could be distracting for just normal course of driving, let alone Bird scooters.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, from Manager Foggan.
The map that has been presented has the scooters not going past I-40. So we, we, we agree with you on that. It's, it's Stockton Hill without the bike lane in a very busy. I, I don't even have to wait till Friday afternoon. I could go at 11:30 in the morning and be concerned, so we totally agree with you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Councilman Walker?
Um, one question for the Bird representative. How fast do these things go?
Good question.
They go the same speed as, as a novice bicyclist, they go 1, 1.5, so 15. They're, they're designed to be exactly the same as a bicycle.
Okay. Thank you. I also had some concerns with, you know, Stockton Hill, even downtown, right down here between Fourth and Third, diagonal parking, these guys out in the streets, you know, I, I assume these things have worked in other cities with the same type of parking. You know, I, I do have that safety concern, but I do see that there. You know, I, I do have that safety concern, but I, I do see that they're, they have to be eighteen years of age to ride them. There are safety classes. We do have a termination clause that looks like we can get out of this pretty quick if there was issues. The city's being identified. You know, I think it would be good for tourism. You know, that's a big plus. Yeah, it's a one-year pilot, a- and, and we're going to get data from it. I, I kind of, I have my concerns, but I think you, I see some positive out of this.
I echo everything that's been commented on today, tonight, and I know a couple of things, I know the, this is a one-year pilot program. And can we, let's say after ninety days, some things have happened that are horrible, can we get out of it after ninety days, for example? Okay, I'm, I'm seeing nodding heads from our, our city attorneys, so.
And Mike is nodding his head.
Okay, so that's one concern. Um, I like the idea it's a pilot program. You go to a lot of cities and these are pluses for people to get around, and especially in some ways in our downtown area, because once you get off Andy Devine, the speeds are lower on Beale and other streets down here, and so that helps slow them down more. And slow, not so much the scooters, but car automobile traffic. And then, um, and if, with, with the city streetscape, as Manager Foggan mentioned, that will actually help also to reduce some of those speeds. So these are all pluses for the downtown area. I true, too, I'm truly concerned about Stockton Hill Road, even from the section from the post office going south, it's a slight downhill and everybody tends to pick up speed going down that area. And even though it's a posted speed limit of thirty-five, I would bet on any, any given day, and Chief Cooper, you're not hearing this, right? But, and I'm probably guilty of it too, so, but speeds are a concern from our automobiles. And so I do have a concern about the, the scooters being there. I know that if you go online and do, look for compliments about Bird scooters, there's, there's a fair amount, but if you also do about complaints, there's also an equal amount. I did want to ask, uh, Manager Foggan, and well, actually, our Assistant City Clerk, Tanya, was this put into official record already, this letter that we received today?
Correct.
Okay, so do we need to read that in this? So we don't, okay, we're good. But as Mayor mentioned, Mr. Case also mentions a number of concerns that he has. And so I'm sort of torn. I really like the idea for downtown, but also having visited many other downtown cities, I see scooters in sort of remote places and it's like, it's like litter. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that, too. And they'll be there for more than just one day. So.
I do.
These are comments. So anyway, I'm done with my comments. Uh, Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Case, for sending us this letter. Um, I wanted to just touch base on a couple of things in here before I asked some questions. Having the docking stations, we are familiar now with the docking stations. We know we're working on different locations, so that's a plus. We already have a bike lane on Stockton Hill. I'm, I'm not going to say that was my favorite decision in the whole wide world to make, but, but it's there and we can utilize it. So, I mean, that's a, that's a positive to all of this. As far as the liability goes, I, uh, coming from an insurance background, we're, it looks like we're pretty clear. There isn't anything that, that the city's going to have to worry about with that. My big question at this moment would be to, to, uh, Mr. Cooper, would be how, what is this going to do as far as an increase in our already limited police staff? That would be the only question that I have in that. Whoever needs to answer that, go for it. Yep, oh, sorry.
Chief Cooper.
You know, one of you two. Sorry about that, yes, Chief Cooper.
I, I don't have anything that causes me concern that would cause me to recommend us not to do it. Uh, we will treat it as bicycle traffic and the rules do apply. I would point out these aren't considered coasting vehicles, so there are codes and laws that apply to bicycle traffic and, uh-
Okay, that's good to hear. Honestly, I, I do a lot of traveling and unfortunately, the last two years have been for health reasons for parents, and I've been in a lot of communities across the country and they're there, they're all over. Might not be the Bird Company, but there's, there's, they're everywhere that we see them. And I think since it's an opportunity for us to just do a, a temporary test, let's, let's try it out. I mean, we know we can get out of it. That's the beauty of it, so. That's my thoughts and I'm done with my comments. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I, I have one, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Mello.
So, um, with the parklets downtown here and no bike lane, right? They're going to just go along and then they're going to go around it? Is that how we're going to do it?
So with the streetscape happening, the parklets are going to go away. Again, these, these vehicles function exactly like a bike. So whatever bike activity you would expect to see on Beale Street is what you could expect from these scooters. Stop signs have to be obeyed. If they get to those parklets, they're going, and, and frankly, Beale Street has forty-five degree parking now. Those, it would be an expectation, I, I have, looking at Beale Street on a daily basis, those parklets don't stick out past the parking spaces, so we would expect to see them where, where they should be the entire time. There may be some people with less parking in certain areas of Beale that might cheat through the parking, the forty-fives, but for the most part, they're going to have to be in the travel lane as part of riding these. And again, um, we, even with the streetscape not being done, we as a community have encouraged bicycle activity, um, and have been doing so at least since I've been here. And this, this really does mirror bicycle activity. And, and there is inherent risk in bicycle, riding a bicycle, and there is in, in riding these scoo- scooters.
Okay. Councilwoman Samley.
I'm Vice Mayor. Oh.
Councilwoman Samley first and then Mayor Miles.
Okay.
Thank you. So after the pilot program, then it will come back to council with a more formal agreement for another period of time? Is that how I understand it?
The agreement enables us to extend, uh, the agreement that we have.
Does it also allow for us to change anything in the agreement at that time?
Yeah, from the time that, you know, we can add stuff in at that point. You know, if we have other things that pop up during this time, I'm sure we'll, we'll be in discussions about what those might be as well. But, uh, yeah, within the, uh, term, uh, gives us, uh, you know, we have to give notice and then we can put those changes in and, and move them forward. Also, um, it does have in there, and maybe Carl can talk to this in regards to a ordinance potentially in the future.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of options, but first we look at, we do have the ability to terminate the agreement with twenty-four hours' notice. So that, if there's issues, we can deal with it that way. Anytime you, you have an agreement, you can always amend agreements, renew agreements, whatever council desires, whatever the parties are looking towards. In addition, we can decide if this is something that's going to maybe become a permanent fixture in the community, because these bikes, these e-scooters are going to exist and many communities are just adopting ordinances to address this. So that could be another option that we can do. I think part of it is this just gives us the ability to get some data to better understand the situation and then take the appropriate solution when we get to that point.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was going to come back before council. We had an opportunity to amend if we wanted to amend. Do we also have the opportunity, if another bike, uh, vendor comes to us, to get into multiple agreements with different vendors?
Yes, this is non-exclusive.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mayor Miles?
Well, Attorney Cooper just, uh, mentioned what I was going to. I think the reason that I will be in favor of this tonight is because the termination agreement that's written into this is about the shortest I've ever seen. And it gives us, if, if things really go south, the ability to just stop it. And also based on what I've read, um, there have been cities that stopped it and then came to a new agreement with improvements, uh, to make a better program and a better fit. And I think with the understanding that that could happen and hopefully without having to terminate and start again, uh, if working together on issues that are going to arise, it would, it could be, you know, evolved into something that works for our city.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Miles. Mike from Bird Scooter, do you have any closing comment?
No, I think, uh, I think you guys just about said it, but again, our, our recommendation is to trial this the same way that hundreds and hundreds of, of other cities have done. And, um, I think as you're going through this assessment and, and evaluation process, every city before you has been asking the exact same questions. Every city before you has voiced the same concerns, and yet they've all arrived at that same conclusion that they do feel like the benefits outweigh any cons to the point where they go, hey, this, this looks good, let, let at least give this a shot.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again for all the comments that have been made on this. Yes, Councilwoman Mello. Councilwoman Mello.
So who decides if, if things go south? Who decides we're going to terminate it? Does it come back before us? Does Manager Foggan? How is that determined? To terminate?
Yeah, we, we bring it back to the council to tell you that the pilot program was not successful.
Okay. I think you've, all our concerns have been answered, and once again, I, we appreciate all the comments. I'd like to hear a motion then about item four A, electric scooter pilot program operating agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Vice Mayor, could I just?
Yes.
Motion was so moved, and I'm apologized, or I think moved very quickly. I'm, I'm going to make the assumption so moved to approve.
Yes.
Yes, so moved to approve.
I, I, yes, just clarifying.
Nope, thank, thanks for that clarification. Okay, item four B on our agenda. Ordinance number nineteen thirty-four, and I apologize, I should have read that introductory on that other one, uh, on the previous item, but item four B, ordinance number nineteen thirty-four, amending section three dash ninety point two five oh, recreational vehicle, RV park of the zoning code of the City of Kingman. And a request from Lenore, and excuse me if I say this wrong, Knutson? Knutson?
I pronounced the K as well.
Okay. Applicant for a text amendment to section three ninety dash two point five, two point two five oh, recreational vehicle RV park, the zoning code. Specifically, the request is to allow both movable and stationary units in RV parks. Delete the minimum park size requirement. Establish a standard for park spaces for stationary RVs. Reduce setback requirements and modify screening, parking, and recreational requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this request at a special meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The commission voted three to one to recommend approval of the text amendment with certain modifications, and staff recommends approval. Mr. Ruggles, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Watkins, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this is a text amendment to the, uh, Kingman zoning code, amending section three dash ninety point two five zero, which is the recreational vehicle park standards. Uh, the applicant is, as you heard, is Lenore Knutson. And this amendment, if approved, as recommended, um, would allow both movable and stationary units in RV parks, delete the minimum park size requirement, establish a standard for park spaces for stationary RVs, reduce setback requirements and modify screening, parking, and recreational area requirements. So currently, um, RV parks are allowed by conditional use permit in several zoning districts in Kingman, including the C two, C three zones, as well as to the transit zones in the downtown area, which is T five G and T five MS. The section that would be amended tonight is the section that provides the regulations and standards for those parks. And within the code, we also have definitions for what actually is a recreational vehicle, what's, what, what is a, an RV park, and what is a travel trailer. So if this amendment, um, is approved, um, as proposed, it would accommodate, uh, future consideration of a proposed RV park with refurbished airstream trailers for short-term rentals, uh, that's proposed on a property in the downtown area that is owned by the applicant. There's a narrative and concept plan that's provided to you in your packet. That's information only, uh, that's not being approved tonight. Just the text amendment to allow this to potentially go forward is, is what's being considered for, for tonight. Uh, the text amendment itself is also not site-specific. Uh, any changes to the RV park standards as proposed would potentially be applicable to all zones that allow an RV park by CUP. If approved, the P and Z Commission would consider, uh, the CUP during a separate future public hearing. There would also be a, uh, review by the, the Heritage Preservation Commission, because this is a location, the applicant's property, I should say, is a location within the historical overlay district. So this slide here is the beginning of the applicant's, um, proposal. The language that is proposed to be removed is shown as, as strike-through, and anything to be added is underlined in red. Uh, the first change would be under one, that, uh, there'd be, uh, RVs would be, would include stationary permanently set and also movable units. Second change would be to eliminate the two-acre minimum size for a park and replace it with, uh, the wording that the area necess- would be the area necessary to comply with open space, RV, RV space, and setback requirements in the section, um, for either the movable or stationary units. Uh, we clarify that the minimum size or minimum or maximum number of units per acre is, uh, the proportionally equivalent for areas of less than one acre if the park was, was smaller than an acre. Uh, we'd also add a paragraph under park spaces that would allow the minimum area for a stationary RV space to be one, one and a half times the square footage of a, the stationary vehicle, unless it was otherwise determined by the city's zoning authority, which in this case would be the P and Z Commission, since they have the authority to review and approve CUPs. Um, so looking at this first section, um, in the analysis, the reduction of the, or elimination of the park size minimum is proposed because the applicant's property is less than, less than two acres. It's a roughly half an acre in size. The commission, when reviewing this, uh, request, has some concerns over, uh, the possibility that this could open up other areas of town for, uh, park requests on similar-sized properties. Uh, as a result, the commission did recommend limiting this particular change to just the T five MS zone, which is the, uh, extends, uh, from, along the north side of, at Andy Devine, from First to Eighth Streets in the downtown area, and it would include the applicant's property. As I mentioned, there's a distinction made between movable and stationary RV units. A stationary RV is what you would probably typically, typically consider to be a park model, or in the case of the applicant's, uh, proposal, these would be, um, non-movable airstream-type trailers. I mentioned that the RV's, uh, space, uh, minimum would be reduced for stationary RV, uh, RVs and parks. Currently, the minimum standard is thirty by sixty-five, um, which includes the, a vehicle space, which is typically nine by eighteen. This would reduce the, for stationary RV space to around four hundred and eighty square feet. The space size reduction probably could be supported as long as the parking space was not part of that, um, RV space, if it was elsewhere in the park, which is actually something that is, um, being requested as part of this text amendment. Um, the commission, however, did recommend limiting this change again to the T five MS zone. And this is the map just showing the downtown zones. The purple is the, uh, T five MS zone between First and Eighth Street. Um, you can see the other zones in the, in the downtown area as well. And this entire area is part of the infill incentive district, which I'll, I'll explain the, the, um, the relevance of that in, in a moment. Next section is, um, the applicant has proposed to reduce the minimum setback from twenty to ten feet, uh, for- feet for the distance between the the parking pad for the RV and any property lines. The applicant would like, in their case, to have that open visibility on the Andy Devine side, given the type of park this would be. Currently, our standard is to have everything screened, so it's proposed that that side would be open to the street. And then I mentioned earlier that the off-street parking spaces could be either at the at next to the RV space or in another location within the park. That's another proposal. The reduction in setback requirements is would be would place the similar to what we currently require for setbacks for buildings in commercial areas that are adjacent to residential districts, 10 feet is the minimum setback. The only part that would be a little bit different would be portions of Stockton Hill Road between Detroit and College Drive do have a 15-foot setback. And as I mentioned, this is potentially allowable in all areas, that would be zone C2 or C3, which most Stockton Hill Road is, with a conditional use permit. And I also mentioned the screening of the park along the along the street. Again, it's understandable in the applicant's case that she may not want to have that, but there are other places in town where you certainly probably do want screened for RV parks. The commission ultimately recommended only the only to allow the no screening on the street side in the T5MS zone. Well, that would be determined during the CUP review process that that could be allowed. And then finally, the last portion that's proposed would be to ban or to clarify that open fires at RV spaces are prohibited unless they're in approved firing. This just kind of clarifies the current allowance. And then finally, the minimum space size or minimum recreational space requirement per RV space would be reduced from 200 square feet to 100 square feet, and the minimum size for a communal recreational area in the park would be eliminated. We certainly can support the clarification on open fires, that's there's a public safety aspect there that's warranted. The reduction in the communal recreational areas for the RV parks, this would be would reduce the recreational space area for all RV parks by 50%. So that would significantly reduce the recreational opportunities of parks of all sizes. This really has more of an impact on the smaller parks, the especially the standard for the 2,500 square feet minimum area. So as a result, the commission recommended removing the minimum recreational area requirement only for parks within the T5MS zone. We publicized this text amendment for both the PNC Commission meeting, as well as tonight's council meeting on January 9. We have not received any public comments. There were no public comments at the council, the commission meeting last week, except for those made by the applicant. There really were a few department or agency comments. As part of the review process for the text amendment, certain findings are need to be made, and that would be, first one would be, A, is the is the amendment consistent with the general plan, other adopted plans, and other city policies? B, will the will make sure it's not detrimental to public interest, health, safety, and convenience or welfare of the city? Is that something that's necessary to address a demonstrated need in the community, and also necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions or policy? And E, the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other provisions of the code? So the first item to to consider is its consistency with the general plan and other policies and plans. We have multiple goals and objectives within the Kingman general plan under several different elements. That include maintaining aesthetically pleasing streetscapes, and also enhancing preserving the downtown area, including the historic fabric. Changes to the RV park standards would should be considered context of all goals and objectives. There could be some concerns with the screening changes if they were universally applied. For that reason, as I mentioned, the commission support limiting those changes just to the T5MS zone. This proposal is not expected to be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, and convenience of the city. And as I mentioned, clarifying the conditions under which fires can be allowed in RV sizes probably will would enhance public safety. I showed the map earlier that showed the infill incentive district, and that includes the applicant's property, and this district established by the city waives building permit fees, but also waive the conditional use permit fee that would be heard by the PNC Commission. This is intended to encourage development and redevelopment in certain areas of town. So if you were to amend the RV standards, especially with regard to the lot size, this would allow this particular property to be considered another ones potentially for the for the RV park development. And the again, the incentive district is intended to reduce blight and encourage, also encourage visitation in the downtown area. Finally, consistency with other applicable provisions of the code. I mentioned the 15-foot setback standard on Stockton Hill Road. That that may be something we want to put into the to the amendment to clarify that that standard would still be applicable. So based on the overall findings, the commission did recommend approval of the applicant's, a modified version of the applicant's request by a vote of three to one. And I'll show you those, the recommended ordinance, 1934, with the bold, underlined, capitalized text to show additions, and the strike bold strike-through text to show deletions. The ordinance reflects the commission's recommendation, and staff is recommending approval. We'll just go through this. B1 is is the language that was recommended by the or asked for by the applicant. Following that, the minimum size, that would be still would be two acres, except within the T5MS zone. And then again, the reduction in the stationary recreational vehicle space would be something that could be allowed within the T5MS zone, as long as the parking space was not part of the vehicle space. We added a clarification at the end of paragraph 4A regarding the Stockton Hill Road setback requirements, so that would still be applicable to new parks that might happen in the future in that area. And again, the screening would remain the same, except within the T5MS zone. That screening would be determined by the city's zoning authority, which is the PNC Commission. And again, the parking spaces may be relocated elsewhere in the RV park within, again, the T5MS zone. And then fires is the same, and then we, the recommendation was, again, to allow the communal recreational area to be have no minimum size requirement in the T5MS zone, although other areas would still have that requirement. So that reflects the commission's recommendation and the staff's recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicants also here this evening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggles. I like the idea. I've been through, I'm sure most of us have been through other cities, especially along Route 66, where they, I'm going to call this an airstream motel. I mean, that's sort of the idea and concept, and some of them turned out very nice. The one question, I was thinking about all this, why are we making a change amending our plan as opposed to just making a CUP with allowances?
Well, in order for, they started out with realizing that in order for this property to be considered for a CUP, we had to amend the code to allow a reduction in the size. Her property is just over half an acre, the code says two acres is the minimum. So for even a CUP to be considered, we had to make that change.
Okay.
And then some of these other requests are requests the applicant has made of us, and we, this is our analysis of those requests.
And I know that it's really, you have really limited it down with the T5MS zone, and that's that that shows through all the verbiage. And anyway, that's all I wanted to comment on.
Sure.
Council members? Councilwoman Nelson?
It was a three to one vote on planning and zoning. Can you tell us why the one voted against?
The one Commissioner, Commissioner Waters was was just concerned with the possibility that what might might happen in the future on that on that site. Not so much with the applicant's vision, but what happens in the future if it probably gets sold, and someone has a different vision, and how do we control that? And we kind of said, well, you can control some of that through the CUP process. But his his concerns were were still there, so that's why he voted against it.
Councilwoman Samley.
I had two questions. That was a good question, because that was one of my questions. I'd like to know where this property is located?
I'd be happy.
I see the concept plan, but where?
Yes, I can put the concept plan here. It's located between, it's on the north side of Andy Devine, between Second and Third Streets. So if you're looking at this map, the post office is to the right, and the car wash is to the left.
Okay, all right. And and my next question was going to be just a clarification on the the conditional use permit. When the property, if in the event the property changes hands and there becomes a new owner, do they have to reapply for a conditional use permit if they were to change anything about the concept, or?
Well, the
Does that follow?
The conditional use permit follows the property, doesn't doesn't
Okay.
Have to be renewed when there's a new owner. However, if that new owner wanted to make some changes that were part of the conditional conditions of the conditional use permit, they would have to come back and seek a new newer revised permit.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Miles.
Well, first, I'd just like to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission, because this is quite quite a lot of work to to go through this assessment and to make the changes that they've recommended, and and I truly appreciate the work they put into it. I also appreciate very much the concept that's in front of us, because it takes property that right now is pretty non-functional and almost, I would think, a blight, and turns it into something that I think the city will benefit from. So I appreciate the the both the developers' efforts to have this vision, but then the PNC real thorough analysis of it. And so I agree that limiting this to an infill area is probably a really good idea. So I just want to thank them very much for for the work done. I'm very supportive of this project and this amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Miles. Any other comments for Rich? Our applicant, Lenore Knudsen's here, and Lenore, can we turn some time over to you?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor Miles, and all council members. Manager Foggan and Attorney Cooper. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have an updated site plan. We have hired an architect to develop the site plan, and you either remember or see on here that there are two small buildings involved as well. One is the Little Stone Building that has been vacant for about 30 years, and the other one is what we call the Print My Pet Building. Both of those buildings are in very poor condition. The property itself is blighted. The property is visible from the Kingman Arch, the new arch, the drive-through arch, and having an opportunity to clean up this property, to make it a point of pride for the City of Kingman is part of our goal. The text amendment allows us to realize our dream, which is to have a vintage, vibrant airstream community. These are 60s and 70s airstreams that have been completely gutted. We've taken them down the ribs. They will have all-new electrical, all-new plumbing. They'll be hooked into the sewer system. We had our preliminary meeting with health and safety and engineering and zoning, and it was actually the, I believe, the fire department that requested that we moved parking away or suggested that we move parking away for health and safety reasons. So the parking will not be next to each unit. The parking will be inside the the park area, if you will, what we're calling an airstream community. It's hard to name something like this. The airstream community, the parking will be in there, and it will be have a common shade structure. That shade structure will have a sealed gas fireplace in it. We will not be allowing any open fires. The each unit, again, has been gutted down to the ribs, and we're taking it back up. Again, these are two-person units. We hope that we might be able to find, the airstreams are hard to find, especially the vintage ones, so we're hoping that we might be able to find one that would accommodate. There's some wide bodies out there that might accommodate a small family, but otherwise, these are two-people units. So the amount of space and the amount of recreation inside the confines of the park are really geared towards adult activities and two adults per unit. I have spent my entire adult career working on behalf of individuals with disabilities. So you can see in one corner, we're reserving space to try and make an ADA-accessible unit as well. I do have an updated site plan that has some exciting refinements in it, because both the Stone Building and the Print My Pet Building have been rented, and they will be renovated as part of this project as well. The Stone Building will be a walk-up ice cream shop called Scoops, and the coffee, the other building will be a coffee shop called Mud. So if I can, do you want the updated site plan?
If you can make sure our clerk gets one too, please.
And I'm happy to answer any questions that might
Council, any questions for Ms. Knudsen?
I do have a question. So I see down at the bottom, it's called a retro airstream boutique hotel.
I'm sorry, that's just what the architect put on there. That is not the name of it.
So, well, and not so much the name, but how the are are these units that will be rented? Will it be like a hotel where you'll have people coming in and out? So explain to me, you know, will you rent them by the month? Will you rent them? Yeah.
These are going to be Airbnb units, so we anticipate the average stay to be roughly two days.
And I just wanted to make the comment that I think this is awesome. I think it's a it's a great idea, especially with all the international travelers that we have. I think they are really going to enjoy this experience. So so thank you for your time and your investment in downtown Kingman. It's a great concept.
You're welcome. It's a dream come true for us, and we also think that it's going to be attractive to Route 66 travelers, and just keep it in mind that the 100th birthday of Route 66 is coming up in 2026, so we want to make sure that we are on the map for that celebration, and that we can increase the foot traffic downtown for Kingman, because none of these units are going to have full kitchens in them. There won't be cooking involved. All of these people are going to be part of the vibrant, walkable downtown community. They'll be going to the pubs and the restaurants for their meals as well.
Maybe they can use those scooters.
Right. Could be handy right there.
Councilwoman Nelson?
I I want to just commend you. So often, we have so many people, pardon me, that come in and they say, why doesn't the city do? Why doesn't the city do? Why doesn't the city? City should do this, city should do that. What makes a city vibrant and alive is when its citizens step up and and take charge, and you've done that. And this is this is pretty awesome. It's really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. It is exciting.
Okay. Any other comments? I likewise, I think it's a great idea. Airstreams are cool, and I think it also, you've selected an area that needs some improvement, and it's going to make the downtown area much more livable, usable. Can we have a motion then on item 4B, ordinance number 1934, amending section and additional verbiage?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Oh, Mayor Miles, I'm sorry.
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded, okay. All those in favor of item Oh, you seconded, okay. All those in favor of item number 4B, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Thanks again for all those who have commented on that. Item number five, department reports, as mentioned. As item 5A, coasting vehicles report will be moved to a later date, a later council meeting. So then, item 5B, truancy court report. Judge Sanger, I think we're picking on you again.
Okay. Hello again, everybody. And, yeah, again, this shouldn't take more than two, two and a half hours. So buckle up. The history of truancy court. No, this is going to be very quick, for me at least. I just wanted to let you all know about a, another sort of quasi-specialty court that we're running here at the municipal court. Again, we discussed about the Veterans Treatment Court earlier. And I presented to you all previously about the domestic violence court that we're going to be, should be kicking off here next month. And a third program that we've got going here that we started at the end of last year was a truancy court. It's in conjunction, we have a juvenile court program that we run at the municipal court. And we've been doing that for quite a while. And so we partnered up with the county in dealing with truancy issues that come before us. Sometimes it goes hand in hand with a lot of the juveniles that we do see in our juvenile court. And so this program originated in Bullhead City with Judge Williams down there. And Judge Van Arsdale in our court suggested that we should try this here in Kingman. And it is, it seems like it's been a success so far from what we've seen. We're getting ready to promote or graduate our first group of juveniles on Thursday, who've done well. It's a collaborative effort where we bring in different partners, including the county and probation and different, and try to identify what the underlying issues are that have led to these juveniles being truant. And hopefully, we're nipping it in the bud. And we've presented you all with different materials about, you know, the success of truancy courts and why the need for them, and that it's not just present-day issues, but future as well. So, again, this is something we've kicked off over at the municipal court. And just wanted to let you all know what we're doing over there with the truancy court. And, again, something we're proud of, we hold the truancy court one day a month on Thursdays that are usually reserved for our juvenile court. And so we've designated the first Thursday of every month to deal with that. And, again, it seems to be successful so far. And I'm pleased with my staff, pleased with Judge Van Arsdale and our crew for getting this going and making this, it seems like it's being successful so far. But I guess we'll see what our young graduates do moving forward to make sure they continue to attend school after the thumb is taken off them. So, does anyone have any questions? Or, I told you I'd be quick.
Council members?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Samley.
Thank you. I think this is an area that our community does need some assistance. And how are you identifying the individuals that are going through this process?
We run down to the Circle K and we see if there's any teenagers hanging out there during the day.
You just round them up?
And say, come on, you're coming to truancy court. No, we get referrals from the county, from probation. We get referrals from them. And they're the ones who send them to us.
Okay. So are they not necessarily in trouble yet? Or are they in trouble?
No, I mean, it starts with the school. Obviously, the school has notified the authorities and everything and through the county and then the school district. And then eventually it filters down to us. And then we get a list of juveniles that we need to bring into court for juvenile court. And then the cases are staffed, kind of like we do our other specialty courts. And then they go into court then. So.
Okay. And is this the first graduating class or how?
It is, yes.
This is? Okay.
Again, we held our first one at the, it was in the last year and everything. So it seems like, again, knock on something, that it seems to be working because we've got five of them promoting or graduating on Thursday. So we're proud of it.
Yeah.
Four o'clock.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Judge Sanger?
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Judge, thank you. I think this is a great idea. All communities suffer from truancy. And, yeah. And plus, you're very charismatic. And I, having attended your Veterans Court, I'm sure you'll make this court just as enjoyable. So.
We're trying. So, yes, thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, number six on our agenda, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Starting with Manager Foggan.
I have no announcements tonight, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Walker?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Samley?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nelson? We're going fast and furious. Councilwoman Mello?
I just, I did attend a few things, the tri-city council meeting with you, Vice Mayor. And that, they talked, they gave us ADOT updates, a lot of talk about COVID and the hospitals and what they're doing going forward. We attended the Tesla Supercharger opening. That was fun and very exciting for our town. And also, the Veterans Resource Fair. I had the honor to give a little welcome there. And, you know, that's near and dear to my heart. And that was a great success. So that's what I had going on.
Thank you. Mayor Miles?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the city staff for starting the Citizens Academy tomorrow night. I look forward to welcoming the participants. But they're going, they have committed to seven weeks, every Wednesday night for, I think, three hours to, can you hear me? Because I can't see you suddenly.
Yes, you're coming in very well.
Okay. To learn about our city operations. And I looked at the schedule and the content. And it's just such an opportunity. So I really appreciate that being put together and being delivered. The other thing is, tonight, we shared with you a letter of support we've given to the county for the jobs grant that they're applying for. We're one of many, I think, entities that will be supporting their effort. It's an ambitious effort. I don't know if we'll get it. But it's good, it just represents the partnerships that we continue to be a part of. I did attend a meeting of Care First Arizona with Supervisor Lingens Alter and County Supervisor Angus and County Manager Sam Elters. They are an insurance company, actually, that works with communities. And they're interested in Kingman for a resource, a community resource center. This was a very early conversation. We will be continuing conversations with them. But they have done this in other cities like Avondale, if you wanted to look at their community resource center. It's just, I'm coming up to speed on it too. But that meeting did take place. I was also a part of a small group today that was of the WACAG Executive Board that was interviewed by their federal Department of Health and Human Services auditors and talking about our programs here for Head Start. And I can tell you that we have an excellent program that is, it covers a lot of territory between Mojave La Paz and Yuma. But it's done with great support from many, many cities, the mayors and school superintendents. And it's well governed. And I hope we got that point across because it is, I think it's equitable and well governed. The only other thing I would say is that we've been involved, I've been involved with the legislative discussions or talks that are going on with the league about this current legislative session. And because they are bills of great interest to us as a city, include, I know that Manager Foggan is working with our lobbying team on HB 20, House Bill 2396, which is our funding. If it gets through, we're one of the projects that would be funded for Eastern Avenue improvements. So those are some of the things that are going on. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Miles. I too, just continually want to thank our city staff and all those who work for the city and the job that they continue to do to keep our city running. And I appreciate all of you as council members and the different events that you attended and represent the city. That is truly noted and appreciated. Item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Councilwoman Mello?
Yeah, Manager Foggan, I would just like, I've had a few of our constituents reach out to me regarding the ADA compliance laws. If we could get like, I just need to learn about it. And I think our citizens need to as well because they think we have more power and control than we actually do. I know that some of our businesses have been grandfathered in and there's really nothing we can do. Could we get some kind of report about that? I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other requests? Then we need, as a council, need to move into executive session. Do I hear a motion to, do I need to have a motion? Yes.
Yes. And could you just read the?
Okay, for, to move into executive session.
Could you read the?
Oh, do I need to read that? Okay. Item 8A, city manager annual review. The council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431 dot zero three A1 to conduct the performance evaluation of the city manager. Do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all.
Okay, returning from executive session, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.